Education regular meeting on Monday, January the 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to the pledge of allegiance by Rick Stout, Eastwood Assembly of God.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we counted a privilege to gather in a place like this, Lord, and to be able to call your name without fear. Lord, we stand here, God, and we ask for peace and unity, God. We ask for wisdom to this board, Lord, because these are perilous times that we live in. God, we're dealing with a pandemic and we're dealing with all kinds of issues of life. But, Lord, we know that you're the one, and you said if we lack wisdom, all we have to do is ask you, and you'll give it. Father, I ask for direction for each board member. I ask, Father, that you would keep your hand of covering over them, over their families, over the faculty, over the administration, Lord. Minister to each and every one, it's only you can, Father. And we ask, Lord, for good things. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay, this time we move on to the approval of minutes from the December 14th, 2020 meeting.
No changes?
No change.
Motion to approve minutes.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the minutes from the December 14th, 2020 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. And move on to approval of encumbrances.
Okay, and it's a record. If you look, I think there's maybe 12 encumbrances this month.
I'd say you shorted me some sheets.
No, we're conserving paper. Really, the Tahilla Concepts 290, that's when they did our sign down on Main Street. The lights were out on the white part, the outer part of the sign, so they put LED lighting in that, in that part of the sign. I think that encumbrance was a thousand. I think it's more like $800, $850 is what that's going to cost. The systems, it's just because we've had several jobs that they've done for us, so we encumbered a little bit more money for the rest of the year with them. And down at the bottom, potting soil that comes out of our ag, that's his Ford 12 money, his incentive money that he's using for that to get ready for the greenhouse. Other than that, we don't have any building fund encumbrances or child nutrition or gift fund.
Motion to approve the encumbrances?
I'll second.
Brett and David. Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to approve the encumbrances as listed. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Move on to other financial reports.
Okay, first of all, we received our midterm adjustment, and that's just our state allocation. And we were expecting a decrease. So just real quick, last year, school year 1920, we had a state allocation. As far as that amount of our funding was $5.585 million. And this, at the beginning of this year, our allocation was $5.31 million. That's $266,448 less than last year. And then at the midterm, we took another decrease. And we took a decrease at midterm at $221,052. So we're down on that state allocation from last year at a total of $487,500. Now, as we've talked about, we have the CARES Act money and some things. And then we're looking at the education portion of the stimulus that's been passed, and that'll be pretty significant. They're kind of, they're projecting that to be about four times what the CARES Act was. So if it holds true, it depends on how much the State Department holds out of that funding, but we're looking at about $1.44 million for Stigler's schools out of that.
That, the, what was the reason behind the decrease? Did they give anything on it? Or was this a decrease statewide on everybody?
The midterm decrease, you, of course, you've heard this before, I'm sure, but you go on your, either this current year at the first quarter numbers or your last two years, which everyone's highest. And so most schools, just like we're going on two years ago, because we've been decreasing in enrollment. But this year, with Epic and the other virtual schools, Epic went up 70 something percent in enrollment. So where we're going on our high two years ago, now the state has to come up with the dollars to fund that increase in enrollment, ADM-wise, for Epic and the other virtual schools. So at one point, the estimate was that at the midterm, they were going to owe Epic about $60 million in additional funds, because they're getting about 30, for those, I think it was about $40,000, or what was the number? I can't remember the number. I'm not going to quote anything. But they're going to get, for every one of those students, they receive an additional about $35,000 to $38,000.
More than what public schools do, or?
Well, because they're one of the very few public schools, as you've kind of heard, everyone's lost kids because of the pandemic. About 90% of your public schools in Oklahoma lost kids the first quarter. And then your virtual schools were the ones that increased. So they, they have about 35, 30 to 35,000 that they hold back every year out of state allocation for emergencies, things like that. And then it's going to take that additional amount, and that amount has to come somewhere. So they subtract it out of what the rest of the public schools in Oklahoma are receiving. So as you can tell, to help pay off Epic and those other online schools, it's costing Stigler Public Schools $221,000. And then that's just an epidemic statewide. So that's kind of the reasoning behind that. And then, as we know, the, you know, we had the cut, and that ended up being about $86 per student midterm. So that's as far as the midterm adjustment.
How are we going to absorb these cuts? I mean, I know the CARES Act is going to, obviously going to help. But what happens when we don't get that money like next year if we're in the same boat and our budget's a half a million dollars less?
Well, right now, they're, and it's real early to really put a lot of stock into this, but they're saying their intention is to keep education funding flat going into next fiscal year. Now, we'll, we'll see if that happens. So, but if you look at this next page, and then we'll, we'll kind of talk about that. And this is, this one that shows our, this year's expenditures as compared to 1819. The, the report that I've been giving you each month, Judy and I got to comparing those numbers with that report to another report that we use to populate this spreadsheet here, and there were some discrepancies. So I did not bring a copy of that for you tonight, because I don't want to give you bad numbers. But these numbers are correct, and we'll go back and just kind of look at this for this month. But if you look at our December payroll, number one, and if you look at the top left-hand column, that's 2021, once again. The right-hand column is fiscal year 1819. And that's kind of what we're comparing apples and apples to kind of keep us in the right ballpark. But if you look at across at December, starting with regular payroll over on the left, at $653,000 in regular payroll in December, we had $46,131 in extra payroll, for a total of $699,499 in payroll in December. Now, one thing that we look at there, if you look at November, we pay stipends. Anybody that receives a stipend for work above and beyond their contracted pay, we pay those twice a year. For example, if they make $2,000 to do high school cheerleading, or whatever it might be. If that stipend is less than 500, we pay it at the end of the fall semester. If it's more than 500, we pay half of it at the end of the first semester, half of it at the end of the second semester. In the past, if you look at, over at November of 201819, you see extra payroll of $67,000. You can see how much more, about $40,000 more than normal. That is the month in the past that we've paid those additional stipends. This year, on the advice of our auditor, our auditor said, pay those in December. It's a little closer to when they've completed that work. And so this year, we were pretty proud to see in December that if you notice, we paid those stipends in December this year. You can see $46,000 for extra payroll, instead of 29, 35 in that. You can see it up there. And that's because we paid those stipends. If you look over to the column with all the red numbers, increase or decrease, we paid those mid-year stipends and still come in under 1819 for December, $4,901. So we're pretty proud of that coming in for December. If you look up above that, look at the difference for November, over there on the right-hand column. There was that $48,000 less this year. That's because in November, we didn't pay those stipends. In 1819, they did. And then we paid them in December and still spent less in December than we did in 1819. So right now on payroll, we're setting that, we're ahead this year, $78,268.05. So if you go down to the bottom, and we're talking about bills, anything outside of payroll, you can look down at December. We spent this last, this December, we spent $80,850. As compared to 1819, we spent $106,845. So we're 20, almost $5 within being $26,000, spending that much less this year than in 1819. So we're starting to see with those grants being spent and all that money we had to spend upfront, we're starting to see that turn around. So we're looking, hopefully, for another month like that in January, to kind of see us getting back in the ballpark. That last number down there at the bottom, $267,999, that's where 267,999 dollars more spent this year than in 1819 at this point. So we'll hopefully continue to watch that number go down. We'd like to kind of break even there if we can.
Is that COVID-related? Is this number so much higher, the 267,000, related to COVID?
Yeah, but look at one, for example, on bills, look at August, $326,000 over on the left-hand column.
I mean, from November to December, it's $50,000 more than what we spent this in December than we did in November on our bills. Am I reading that right? 2021 bills for November was $132,708, for December it's $80,000?
Correct.
That's $50,000. I mean, what was, why is it, I mean, I could see if it was 10 or, I mean...
I can't, we've got like, for example, you're going to have those monthly bills, your water, electric, and so forth. Phone bill, that kind of thing. I have a sheet on that. I don't have it in here. I know, for example, we do bills twice a month, and for December, our first half before we got out for Christmas break, was $17,000. And I'm thinking, boy, we're going to do really good this month. And then we ended up paying, it was going to be around 40,000 to 50,000, and then we got the bills in for all of that simulator equipment that the ag bought. So I believe that was like $27,000, or we would have been a whole lot better off. I know one of the things, Kenny, back in December of 18, for example, that 106, as compared to, you know, the month before, I know in those notes, I remember we bought a bunch of computers that month.
Both months added together are close to the same amount for 1819 and 2021. I mean, they're, if you add December, November, December for them, then now...
Oh, if you add those two months together, right.
I guess it's probably bills going on.
Right. Because when we get to March, it's going to blow up because of the pandemic. So we started out at the beginning of the year with 1920 over here, and we changed so we'd get more, better later in the year. We'd actually be better off right now if we were... But we're sitting still at, at $267 below where I would like to be, which is being even with 1819.
Does this, I know we went to 1819. How does it compare to last year? Is it just so, I mean, I know it's muddy, doesn't it?
Right.
I was asking why we didn't care.
Right now, when we, and we, I mentioned that back, I don't know, it's probably October, when we changed this column from 1920, because in visiting with Judy, I said, let's go ahead and change it. At that point, we still look, we look better, especially salary-wise, comparing ourselves to 1920. But in the long run, of course, they spent more in 1819, because you had a lot of months last year, you didn't spend hardly anything.
The last part of the year.
Right. So we went ahead, I think it was probably November board meeting, and changed this column over here to 1819. And they're going to be within 60, 70,000, you know, what was spent this year. So that's kind of where we are on that, and I apologize to that other report, but when I saw the numbers were a little bit off, I didn't want to give that to you. And we'll try to see what the problem is and get that back to you next month. Another thing I put with your stack of handouts is child nutrition. Should be on the front page, and I kind of designated that bottom right, those numbers, and what those signify. If you'll look here, now, I don't know why, but we haven't changed this over to comparing to 1819. It's comparing to last year. At this time, that's fine. But if you look at the first column, it's showing you what we've spent to this point this year on payroll, bills, and a total as compared to last year, and then totals down at the bottom. But if you look over at the right hand, where I kind of squared it in there, so far this year, we've spent $18,500 more on payroll for child nutrition. We've spent $36,600 more on bills. That's going to be our food stuff and paper products and such. And we spent a total of $55,200 more this year on child nutrition. As compared to that back page that goes along with that, it shows you our revenue. And we've kind of talked about, we knew we were going to get a lot more revenue. We were serving a lot more meals this year, because everybody can eat free this year. So if you look at same squared in area down at the bottom, we have taken in, as far as claims, revenue from the federal government, we've taken in $114,966 more this year in claims than we did last year. We've taken in $2,785 less in local funds. That's kids paying their own lunch bill. Nobody's paying a lunch bill. So net, we, we have $112,181 more in revenue this year in the child nutrition. That's why we're pulling those salaries over into child nutrition and taking the pressure off of, off of our general fund. And one of the things, kind of like you talked about earlier, how are we making that up? We're putting our, instead of having half of a child nutrition salary in child nutrition as far as the Child Nutrition Administration, we have one and a half salaries in child nutrition. And then we're coming in this next month, and we were advised that with all this revenue, we're going to have to spend all but three months cost of that, of those proceeds by the end of the year. So what we're doing is going in, those after-school teachers, they go in that cafeteria and sit and feed them that third meal. So we're going to put so much of their time into child nutrition, 30 minutes to an hour a day for each one of those seven teachers that are helping there. They said we can go in on our custodians, and they clean that cafeteria every day so we can pay a certain amount of their time out of child nutrition. So those are all things, Brett, that, you know, that will take some pressure off of that general fund. That's one area where we're going to try to conserve there. So that is kind of where we are on other financial reports. Unless y'all have any other questions.
Everybody good? Okay, this time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BED-R. No one present for that. Information item A, superintendent's report.
Okay. First of all, I've been kind of keeping you up on COVID numbers for the year. Each, and I sent out something last week, and I believe, I haven't looked at that since, but I believe those numbers were in the mid-30s as far as total people out in the district due to isolation or quarantine. And I was going to, I was asked the other day, what's the difference in isolation and quarantine? We, we say you're isolated if you've tested positive. You're under isolation, and it's just, it's the verbiage we get from the health department. We say you're quarantined if you're out because you came in contact with a positive person. So when we talk about these numbers, that's what we're talking about. At the grade school right now, we have, as far as isolation, we have one teacher isolated, under isolation, and zero students. We have, as far as quarantined, we have no teachers. And that's, we have one teacher quarantined and three students. At the middle school, we have, as far as isolation, we have one teacher and six students. And part of that just happened because of basketball games this weekend that I just heard today, the Booster Busters. So they had some contact there. So middle school isolation, we have one teacher, six students. Quarantine, we have two teachers and four students. High school, we have no teachers isolated and one student. And quarantined, we have no teachers and two students. We also, at this time, as far as staff members outside of certified personnel, we have two staff members in isolation and one quarantined. Vaccinations, we've been in contact with the health department, and originally, our nurse had me start a list of teachers, and they were going to move, we're in this tier.
Phase two.
Right. We're in this tier, but she called me back and said, I'm getting ahead of myself. So keep that list, and those teachers that are not in that older age bracket will need to wait just a little while, and she's going to contact me when that time has come for them to be ready. And then we've been in contact with the Choctaw Nation, and they're willing. We had some teachers signed up that are, have a CDIB and are eligible there to, they're going this week to start their vaccinations. So that's kind of underway, and probably slower process than what we all want, but it's underway. We are passing out, just to kind of FYI, we're passing out as a Black Diamond Conference for basketball season. And we talked about this early on, and they wanted to try tickets. We had a, we had a Zoom meeting last week, and we, we suggested this beforehand, and we finally decided to do it. But what we're doing is each school's getting 300 tickets. And we're giving each school 100 of this ticket, and it says, admitted all schools. So this will get you into any away game in the Black Diamond Conference that Stigler plays in. This card says all schools, with the exception of Pacola, because every school in the conference is pretty similar on their, the number of people they can hold. Wilburton's a little bigger, but Pacola's a lot smaller. They can, they can take about 100 visitors. So we've, just for instance, our Stigler folks, we're passing out 100 of these that say all schools, and we're passing out 200 of these that say all schools except Pacola. And they'll just need to show that at the door, and what Eric Stout and Tony Gilmore are in the process of getting these cards to the players, determining how many players we have, divided into 300, and passing those out. So that's kind of how we're going to handle as far as in the Black Diamond Conference the rest of the year, kind of keep those numbers down. So that, so if you hear anything on the cards going to ballgames, that's kind of what that's dealing with. We are, we're going tomorrow, Mr. Gilmore, Coach Risen Hoover, Eric and myself to a meeting in McAllister, dealing with public versus private schools and activities. And that's due time. I liked, we have a superintendent at Stroud that has a plan, and he was wanting to present that tomorrow, and they're going to five different locations in the state over the next few days. And I liked, in the email that said, this is not a gripe session, it's a solution. So that's what we need. It's time, we've been, as he called it, griping about the private schools for years. It's time for a solution. It's time for a solution. So I'm interested to, to go to that tomorrow and kind of see uh where that goes and, and uh what that plan is. Kind of have an idea, but to see it in its entirety.
Or just out of curiosity, are the private schools fighting any changes, or are they just not? I mean, do they, do they really care one way or the other?
Well, they, they have in the past, but what it, what this, what this plan and, and kind of what we're leaning toward now is allowing them, them be in a district, like we may have Lincoln Christian in our district. But when it comes to playoff time, because what they're afraid of, they can't find ballgames. Who's gonna play them if you're not assigned to play them in a district?
They end up playing each other anyway, most of the time.
Yeah, but there's not very many of them.
I know, but they still end up, even though they're out amongst us, they still end up playing us.
Right.
I mean, playing each other, you know?
Everything, everything would be the same all the way through the season. When you get to the playoff, they may win district championship, just like Lincoln did in ours this year. But uh then after the season's over, you have a private school playoff and a public school playoff. You have a small school, private, a large school. And uh, in talking to the Hall and Hall, uh, head of school superintendent, when we went up to visit them, he said, this is what we did in Tennessee. You know, he came from Tennessee about eight years ago, and he was just astounded the way we did it. And so it's time, and I hope something, something comes of it. And uh, that, and then uh next week, the twentieth of January, we had the legislative uh conference. Time to meet with legislators, so uh Tom and I are gonna go up next Wednesday and, and to that conference. And then, uh, lastly, I know we, we've got something going on tonight on TV, but we'd like to take about a few minutes here and show a video. And we had teacher, well, we had teacher appreciation, y'all are just bound to ruin our teacher tent. But we had a teacher appreciation uh time on Zoom bef- the Friday before we got out for Christmas. And we had our teachers donated cash in order to show some uh appreciation to the support personnel, our administration, uh, donated to uh show appreciation to both, and then our community overall, about forty-five hundred dollars worth of gift cards and prizes to give out in appreciation to the teachers. During the Zoom meeting, this was part of it, we had some students that came in, and we had them kind of share uh a little bit, so it's pretty self-explanatory. So we'll start that.
Excuse me, if you thought the teachers were impressive, just.
Too many people watching the ballgame right now. Try it in.
I think it's because we've all, we're all connected. I'll be dragging it down a bit.
And close it and start it back again.
Yeah, I can try that. Sorry.
While you're waiting, that's our buddy.
Was that the actual one?
That we, that people caught this morning in the.
You just called it this morning? It's been up there a month?
Yeah, that's not long.
Huh?
He's getting the chair around.
He's looking for, he's looking for Suzie waiting.
Yeah, he's waiting for me, trying to buy it. Looks mean.
No.
Excuse me, if you thought the teachers were impressive. Just hold on. All right, here we go. Hey, students are the reflection of their teachers, right? And so we're gonna welcome.
I don't know who that boy is.
Roten.
Excuse me, if you thought the teachers were impressive. All right, here we go. Hey, students are the reflection.